Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out this evening. We're about to convene the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee for Council Bill hearing on 14-0420, which is Property Tax Credits Urban Agriculture. For the purpose of establishing a property tax credit for urban agricultural property, providing for that for the amount, duration, and possible early termination of the credit, imposing certain limitations, conditions, and qualifications, providing for the administration of the credit, requiring that the credit be repaid under certain circumstances, defining certain terms, and generally relating to a property tax credit for urban agricultural property. I'm Carl Stokes, Chair of the committee. To my immediate left is Councilman Bill Welch of the Ninth Council District, who's the sponsor of the bill, too. His left is Councilman Ed Reisinger, the Eleventh Council District, who is a member of this committee. To his far-left is Councilman William Bill Henry, the Vice Chair of the committee, and between the two council members and committee members are Kara Kuntz, who is legislative staff to the President of the City Council. To my right is Jennifer Coates, staff to this particular committee. We do have a number of reports from the agencies here with us. I believe that all of the, well, maybe not everybody. I will go through the agency reports in just a moment, and I won't do full reports on the agencies who are here because they do have a number of comments to the bill. And so I will let them take a few minutes each to present their comments. Before we do that, I will ask Councilman Welch, the lead sponsor on this bill, and I believe there are seven sponsors, co-sponsors, including myself, on this particular bill. So I will ask the councilmen to speak to your bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This bill is an outgrowth of conditions in the Ninth Councilmatic District. In my district, sixty-seven percent of my district is considered a food desert. And in Baltimore City, there are very few districts that do not have food deserts existing. And what a food desert is, is an area where people do not have access to fresh fruits and vegetables and healthy food products. And what this bill proposes to do is to create a ninety percent real estate tax credit to spur the growth of fresh fruits and vegetables in Baltimore City. And the end result is that we'll have an abundance of fresh fruits and vegetables. It'll be available not just to our restaurants and our hotels, but to our communities as well. It will result in a much lower price for those fresh fruits and vegetables and greater health outcomes in our community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else at the council which should speak to the bill before? Okay. Our agencies, Law has reported favorable to the bill with amendments. Law is here to speak to those amendments. Office Sustainability is reporting favorable recommendation on the bill. Office Sustainability is here. They just have a few comments. If they wish, can speak to them. The Baltimore Housing is here also. They are also given a favorable report to the bill. Says Strategy Six of Vacants to Value by Promoting the Productive Reuse of Vacant Land to Support Neighborhood Revitalization. Baltimore Development Corporation is favorable with comments. Is BDC here?
BDC is here.
So they advise adding a ceiling to the credit to deter large or high-value lots from being held and farmed for the primary purpose of receiving the credit. Department of Finance gives an unfavorable report to the bill, and Finance is here. And we will actually ask Finance to be first up in terms of their report and speaking to their comments in the report. Dr. Vorees, I also want to mention that Planning, the Department of Planning, has given a favorable, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The staff has given a favorable report. It goes before the Planning Commission at some point in the future. Thank you. Councilman Warren Branch, a member of the committee, has also joined us this evening, the Thirteenth Council District.
Chairman Stokes, member of council. I'm Dr. Vorees with the Department of Finance. We have been in discussion with the Planning Department. Our initial concerns was that we protect citizens and protect their tax base. We felt that there were some areas in which this credit could be abused, and I'll let Sustainability go over the amendments we have that we think will fix this. They're fairly simple amendments, and we would support the bill with these amendments.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Prefer you go to podium, please. We are broadcasting live, and the camera picks up better at that location.
Thank you, Councilman. The first amendment was to add-
Could you restate your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Abby Cock with the Office of Sustainability in the Planning Department.
Thank you.
So we worked with Finance to address their concerns, and our first proposed amendment was to add, under the definitions, a line reading "agricultural products means plants and animals grown for consumption, comma, aquaculture, comma, and landscaping and horticultural plant materials." Do you want to insert it in there instead? And we would also remove the phrase "for profit" from the line on qualifications for the credit, which says that "to qualify for the credit granted by this section, a parcel of land may not be used for any other for-profit purpose that would subject the parcel to property tax liability." The concern there had been that residences are subject to property tax liability but are not for profit. So by striking the word "for profit" and just saying "any other purpose that would subject the parcel to property tax liability," we would keep people from putting farms on their private yards and attempting to claim the credit. So there's two things there. One is to define what we mean by agricultural products, because in order to qualify for the credit, we currently say you have to produce agricultural products valued at $5,000 or more per year. So we wanted to define what that was. And the other is to take out the word "for profit" from the things that it may not be used for. Sorry, that was a little confusing.
All right. You're good. Thank you.
There were a couple more things.
I'm sorry?
Oh, there were a couple more things.
Go ahead.
One was to, under the section, Section G, "continuous agricultural use required." In Part Two of that, it says "the owner of the property is liable for all property taxes that would have been imposed during that five-year term had the credit not been granted." We would add the language "with interest applied at the rate adopted by the mayor and city council under the authority granted in 14-603 of the state tax property article." So the purpose of that would be to make the city whole and recoup, you know, the full value of the taxes that would have been owed. Moving on to Section H, Administration, we would change it to read that "the Director of Finance, after consultation with the Sustainability Office, may adopt rules and regulations, settle disputed claims, delegate to any other city agency, et cetera." So instead of the Sustainability Office doing it after consulting with Finance, it would be the reverse. And then finally, Section I, Analyses and Reports on Costs and Benefits. Instead of saying "the Director of Finance must analyze the public costs and benefits," it would say "the Sustainability Office must analyze the public costs and benefits." So we're shuffling around the responsibilities based on what they thought they best could do and we thought we best could do.
All right. Councilman, did you have questions?
No, no, I agree with those changes.
All right. Any, we need you to make sure that Ms. Coates receives those amendments and comments, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Did you have any questions or comments on Finance there, MX9?
For me.
Okay. Thank you. Law, please.
Elena DePietro from the Baltimore City Law Department. I have reviewed the bill, and as my report says, I have a couple concerns. Excuse me. My major concern, and I've just received these amendments, so I haven't had a chance to fully digest them, but there is a definition in state law of urban agricultural property and urban agricultural purposes that would be, that would conflict with Section 1018 C1I. Because potentially, in B and C may, would conflict with purposes that are allowed under the state law definition of urban architectural, I mean agricultural, purposes. So I would need a little more time to look back at the state law to determine how I could fix this, to make it consistent. And the other amendment that I would like to see is on page three, line 19, instead of saying "imposed," property tax imposed on the property, we'd like that changed to "due" on the property, because there's a difference between the two, and sometimes the imposed value is not necessarily the tax that's due, if there's a potentially room for mistakes in the imposed value. So we'd rather say what is due on the property.
Okay. Councilman?
Yeah, let me ask a question on the difference between the state definition and our definition. My understanding is that they mirror each other and that we just have additional qualifications as to what constitutes a person involved in urban agriculture. Is that your understanding, or is that something different?
Well, the problem is you've adopted the state's definitions, and then you're contradicting that in the qualifications section. And there's a difference between a qualification for the credit that's in addition to what the state requires and a qualification that decreases the qualifications that are required by the state or is inconsistent with the definitions that the state has said should apply to be eligible for this credit.
And that's fine, but I understand that we also have the ability to have additional qualifications along with what the state-
Right, additional, but you can't alter what the state has already required. You can add to it.
And that's what we're doing. We're not altering.
Well, you are, because potentially, C1I, B, and C would eliminate the availability of the credit to certain purposes that are actually allowed under the definition of urban architectural purpose.
Yeah, I'll be more than happy to sit down and go over that with you. I went over this earlier with Avery Eisenstark.
And I'd be happy to talk to Avery, and we can compare notes.
Pardon me?
I'd be happy to talk to Avery and get his take on it, but that's just my initial reaction to the amendment.
Sure. And I'd like to be-
And if there's a way we can work around it, I'm happy to help with that.
Yeah, and I'd love to be part of that discussion with you.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from any members of the committee? Let me say that, given the complexity and number of amendments, particularly the ones that have just come into us from Sustainability, that we are not going to be able to take a vote this evening. The members of the committee have not had a chance to read through the amendments and discuss the amendments, and I don't want to presuppose the will of the committee, but I'm not sure if we'll be able to get through these amendments in a comfortable manner tonight. Actually, I don't know if Sustainability's amendments are even in proper form, the put before the committee at this time. And so, given that, we are interested in, at the, working with the sponsor as closely as possible. I know the administration has also supported the bill. We won't delay this, so probably in the next week, ten days, we will come back together. We'll recess the hearing later this evening, and we will all come back together and take up the amendments and vote it one way or the other, totally. Councilman Henry, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, what I was gonna check with the Law Department on was if we discussed the amendments tonight, would we be, would you be able to not even have to continue the hearing, but conclude the hearing tonight such that we can just, you could announce a voting session whenever we had a chance to put the amendments together. If the discussion on them happens tonight, then you wouldn't even have to announce another hearing, which would have to be done at a council meeting. You could just notify the Executive Secretary for when you're ready to hold a voting session, and you can get a quorum of us together, and then we can just move it along hopefully even more expeditiously.
Sure. Well, if it's the will of the committee, again, we don't have all the amendments in any proper form, and I just feel frankly, as Chair, more comfortable that we have our amendments in proper form before us. We can, of course, discuss the concept, if that is what the committee chooses to do, and we can have a voting session later with the amendments in proper form before us.
Right, and that was what I was hoping, is that if we discuss the amendments conceptually, it doesn't, we don't, we're not required to have them in writing in front of us in order to conclude the hearing and legitimately have a voting session later on them.
That's true. Councilman, that's true, but Councilman, I think recessing is-
I think Elena's gonna actually opine.
I'm sorry. Before you-
What about the Law Department? They said they have to look into something, and we called you to give a report back to the committee?
I certainly can report back to the committee on paper. However, that, you know, there will be less opportunity for people to understand the amendments if they don't have access, you know, if they, if there's not public testimony on them. So that's the only caveat I have.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I mean, sponsor?
And that's fine. I listen to my, thank you. I was listening to my colleague, Bill Henry, and that seems to be the normal course and the most expeditious manner in approaching the amendments to the bill. And I've heard and I've looked at the Law Department's amendments, and I feel that's the way that I would like to proceed, if at all possible.
But I also heard there's a discussion between Mr. Eisenstark and Mr. Pietro. Again, in this committee, the will of the committee is what I most often would prefer to go with. I don't know if at the end of the session we'll have, we'll have the concept, if we'll have technically exactly what it is we're saying, and we could wind up in need of having more discussion next time and not just a voting session. I don't want to preclude us from having a discussion, frankly, if one is, if more is needed this evening. All right. So it doesn't preclude us from not coming back and holding a short hearing and an immediate voting session. I'm not talking about dragging it out. At the next time we come together, we can do both.
Are you talking, are you referring to a recess, or are you referring to another hearing?
A recess.
Okay. That's fine.
Right. And we would make note that when we announced the continuation, that we would be coming back, most likely also to vote amendments that are before us. Righty. Are there any other agencies who wish to speak this time? Being none, we will now go to the public testimony, beginning with, I'm sorry, I can't.
It's by Goodelson.
I'm sorry, I can't read the last name. Joel of Johns Hopkins University.
It's Goodelson.
Thank you, sir. Your printing is as bad as my cursive, but not that many people under my age know what cursive even means anymore. But, yes, sir. Your full name, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members, distinguished members of the Baltimore City Council. My name is Joel Goodelson, and I'm a professor in the Johns Hopkins Global Obesity Prevention Center. I'm the lead investigator for a program called Be More Healthy Communities for Kids, which is a multi-level obesity prevention program. With me are Dr. Takagusa, who is a professor of civil engineering, who works on systems modeling, which you'll be hearing about in just a minute. One of his doctoral advisees, Sen Lin, who's a systems modeler. Also, Lisa Ercolano, a writer for Johns Hopkins Engineering Magazine. Eli Mui, who's an advanced nutrition doctoral student who has led this policy work, and Kelly Eastman, who is a health policy and management master's student. I'm here to, before you today, to present some evidence in regarding what we feel would be the potential impact of the urban farm tax credit. And I've prepared a brief, five-minute video recording, which I think what we'll do is we'll show this right now, and then we'll be prepared to provide any responses to any questions or concerns that might- Good afternoon. My name is Joel Goodelson, and I'm a professor in the Global Obesity Prevention Center at the Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health. I'm going to present to you a brief description of a simulation model that we developed to model the potential impact of the urban agriculture or urban farm tax credit bill that is currently in consideration. And the title of my talk is "Predicted Impact of Property Tax Credits for Urban Agriculture." Decentralizing food distribution to local food outlets can reduce obesity and risk for diet-related chronic disease. The Baltimore City Food Environment Model is a simulation model designed by the Global Obesity Prevention Center to determine the potential outcomes of certain food policies in low-income Baltimore neighborhoods. This map covers partial areas of Districts Nine, Seven, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, and Fourteen. How did we develop this particular model? This involved a multi-stage process, but included talking to people at the City Health Department, the Department of Planning- ... from real children here in the city of Baltimore. The model includes actual data from two hundred adolescents aged ten to fourteen from Baltimore City. It includes information about their gender, their age, their height, and their weight. It includes actual geolocated destinations, including fifty-seven schools, three hundred and thirteen corner stores and carryouts, and seven recreation centers. And it includes algorithms that help us to describe the decisions that children make based on what these children actually told us about their usage of food sources and the foods they select within these stores. This video clip shows the different components of the agent-based model that we developed. It's divided into several main areas. The central area in the upper left is a picture of a part of Baltimore City, and actually shows a representation of children moving around their food environment and making choices of different types of food sources. It also presents below that a series of levers that you can change to modify the behavior of these kids. So, for example, we developed levers that showed what happens when you increase or decrease the number of urban farms in the city of Baltimore. And it shows the impact of these changes on food choice and on obesity status among these children. So this table presents a couple of different scenarios of the potential impact of the tax credit after five years. Assuming a two percent conversion rate of vacant lots to urban farms per year, we see that there would be an increase in the number of urban farms by three to a total of eight urban farms, and a reduction in the total number of vacant lots that are privately owned from thirty to twenty-seven. And this is associated with increases in the variety of fruits and vegetables available at corner stores and carryouts, and an increase in the consumption of fruits and vegetables among adolescents in terms of total servings. If we look at a higher rate of conversion, a four percent per year, we see that these numbers increase further. This slide presents the preliminary results in a little bit more detail. Assuming a two percent conversion rate per year, we predict a decrease in the number of vacant lots by about ten percent from thirty to twenty-seven. We predict, using the model, an increase in the number of urban farms by sixty percent from five to eight. The model predicts an increase in the availability of fresh fruits and vegetables in corner stores and carryouts by close to fifty percent. We also predict an increase in the consumption of fresh fruits and vegetables by children by about a third. This slide shows a slightly more optimistic scenario, assuming a four percent conversion rate per year, in which case the model predicts a decrease in the number of vacant lots by about twenty percent from thirty to twenty-four, an increase in the number of urban farms by a hundred and twenty percent from five to eleven. In this simulation, we expect to see an increase in the availability of fresh fruits and vegetables in corner stores and carryouts by over a hundred percent, and an increase of consumption of fresh fruits and vegetables by about eighty-six percent, which is more than half a serving of fruits and vegetables. There is a fact sheet that has been distributed along with this video clip, which presents a series of assumptions for how we made these decisions and how different components of the model were rationalized. Future versions of the model can incorporate overweight and obesity predictions. I'd just like to say that I am really excited about this bill, and thank you very much for taking the time to review these materials. Please contact me if you have additional questions. Thank you. I'm ready to be questioned, or any comments that you might have.
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Does your model address the health outcomes or the economic impacts of the communities?
So the model does indeed address health impacts, and we didn't feel comfortable at this stage to utilize the model to say, well, we think this tax credit would have this level of impact on the obesity rate among children. That's something that I think we're going to move towards, but that's certainly part of the model. Economic impact is not currently part of the model. It's something that we've considered, but it would require some substantial revision of the model to do that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from members of the committee or council? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you being with us this evening. There's a sign-in sheet available as persons came in. There was a checkoff box for anyone who wished to testify. That was the only checkoff of anyone who wanted to testify. Are there others who do wish to testify to the bill this evening? Come to the microphone, please, sir. State your name, and you may begin to testify.
How's everybody doing this evening? My name is Willie Ringo, and I'm president of Buie Development Corporation. But I'm also president of a newly formed corporation called Seven Seas Agriculture and Barrow Incorporated. When I first came in, I wasn't really planning to say anything, but after listening, this is very important, what you're considering, and it actually parallels the development model that my company intends to work to help improve seafood and vegetable consumption in urban areas. Let me just say that the premise that you will improve the access of vegetables in an urban area with them being grown in the urban area and decreasing costs is a very bad model, but it also increases the likelihood of what we, what I would call growing products for specific interests or specific wants, and reproducibility to provide those products to the consumer, because we're closer, we're in the community, we're on the ground. So now we can design delivery systems that make reproducibility of use of these vegetables more likely. In addition to this, if it's done commercially and professionally, you will get the health impacts that you want. But let me just say tactfully that if you work with systems where you don't define the potential invisible health impacts that might be there, in other words, growing them in a- in lots where you don't know what the contamination possibilities are in those lots, then you may be studying the wrong problem. I think that if you really want this bill to impact the community, that you should be more focused on a commercially viable product that can serve not only the restaurants and grocery stores, but that can develop pricing relationships with your small stores and packaging relationships that allow these stores to provide these products at reasonable cost. And let me just summarize this by saying one thing: clam shells. Clam shells. They stretch the freshness of fruits and vegetables. And I see them starting to be used in the retail, up-sell retail grocery stores and so forth, but when I go into certain grocery stores in Baltimore City, I still see a lot of organic vegetables that are still loose. I see a lot of vegetables that are, you can tell where they're coming from and where they're grown.
Mr. Ringo, I gotta ask you to stay in front of the microphone, please, because we are recording and broadcasting, actually, live. So I need you to keep the microphone in front of you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So, the issue about health is, how are you assessing or evaluating the quality of the vegetables in the retail stores and the corner stores? Now, as program manager for Maryland Department of Agriculture a number of years ago, my job was to look at ethnic produce and vegetables in Maryland and Virginia, and to come up with strategies to bring quality fruits and vegetables to select communities for consumption that didn't exist. And I'm telling you that you're right about looking at this issue. I'm not sure how much Maryland Department of Agriculture has done concerning this. They, federal state marketing improvement program was focused towards ethnic fruits and vegetables, but in my opinion, the issues are the same. The growth media that you use is going to affect the health of your citizens. And so you should be more concerned about the commercial value. You should be more concerned about knowing what the growth media are and how they affect health, and these kinds of things. And I didn't hear any reference to that, and I'd be glad to talk about this with somebody that's interested. And I am interested in doing this project. You know, I will be trying to move forward on this, but that is one of our main issues. How can we make consumers more healthy by improved equality in delivery of food products? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ringo. We appreciate it. Councilman, sure. Mr. Ringo, there's a question, please. I'm sorry, would you come back? Oh, I thought you said... I'm sorry, I don't hear well. I apologize. There are no questions. There are no questions.
Oh, there are no questions?
No, sir.
Oh, would you like me to make up one?
Thank you. You were crystal clear. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Megan Wakefield. I'm from Community Law Center, and the Baltimore City Office of Sustainability had asked us for our comments as well, and I prepared a letter that I can give to each of the council members. Probably some of these things will change based on the amendments. We heard this earlier. So we basically just had three comments, and I guess I should say, Community Law Center is a pro bono legal services organization that frequently works with nonprofit urban agriculture projects and also community associations that have things like community gardens. So we just had three basic comments. The first was that we supported the definitions of urban agriculture property and urban agriculture purposes as defined in the state tax property article. So we believe they should remain as stated in the state property tax bill. The second is changed based on the amendments that we heard, but we had supported a broader interpretation of the qualifications, basically so that the amendments that we just heard, I think, changed the qualification back to an exclusive use, so the entire property would be used exclusively for urban agriculture purposes. And we had suggested that we support other, imagining other ways that that might work with other uses on the same property. And our last comment was just that we think that the $5,000 produced value requirement is reasonable, but it's probably the upper limit of what's reasonable. So we didn't hear any suggestions today of raising the limit, but we would support keeping it at the $5,000 limit. Those are our only comments on it. We're happy to look at it again once we hear the new amendments, but I can give you all copies of our letter.
Yeah, Ms. Wakefield, do you have a copy?
Yes.
Okay. Give Ms. Coats, please. Any questions, comments from council members? Thank you, Ms. Wakefield. Sir? Come on up, sir.
Thank you. My name is David Bisson. I'm the president and chief executive officer of Big City Farms. We are an urban farming company that was founded in 2010 to create good jobs, revitalize urban landscapes, and produce ultra-local, organically grown food, starting in Baltimore. And I have a few comments in support of the bill. Just one is that there's a lot of organizations and individuals practicing urban agriculture in Baltimore City. They have a variety of goals, which include education for youth and other city residents in relation to healthy food and farming, providing better access to affordable nutritious food, greening and beautifying the landscape, and creating volunteer employment opportunities, among others. Regardless of the goals that folks are pursuing, one sort of common element is that urban agriculture, like rural agriculture, is relatively low margin, profit margin. And if the urban agriculture movement is to flourish, succeed in Baltimore City, and provide benefits to the residents, it's important to have the economic support of the city in the form of this urban agriculture property tax credit, just as rural farms in the counties of Maryland also enjoy a similar property tax credit. I want to just place special emphasis on the economic impact of urban agriculture. Big City Farms has to date created 11 full-time, year-round positions with living wages for folks working on our farms and processing and distributing the produce that we grow to restaurants, institutions, and farmers' markets around the city. We've also threw a partnership with our first network farm. This is with an organization called Strength the Love Too, which is part of Newborn Community of Faith Church, Inc., a nonprofit in the city. They've created an additional four full-time jobs. So just in our Big City Farms network, that doesn't include any other urban farms that are functioning in the city, that's 15 full-time jobs. We hope to create many more, dozens, potentially hundreds, in the next, you know, five to seven year timeframe. And to do that, we really would appreciate the support of the city economically in the form of this credit. So I want to thank you for your time, and glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilman?
Yeah. In terms of those job opportunities, do you also have training opportunities as part of your program?
Yes. We, a good example is that partnership I just spoke of with Strength the Love Too. All of the folks that have worked at the Strength the Love Too farm did not really have prior agricultural experience, which is actually, you know, part of the reason why, you know, we created that partnership, because it's part of the mayor's homegrown Baltimore land leasing initiative. So city land was leased to a partnership of Big City Farms with Strength the Love Too on the premise that they, you know, they as a nonprofit without a lot of agricultural experience needed an experienced agricultural company to make this a successful venture, and it has been. So we do provide, really on a daily basis, training to the folks who are working on that farm. We've actually hired as a full-time, one of our staff, someone who was working with the nonprofit farm, so it's a bit of a pipeline into, you know, full-time, year-round employment with us. That's an option, so.
And are these people from the neighborhoods where farms exist?
Yeah. Everybody at Big City Farms today is a Baltimore City resident. Some of us are longer time residents than others. We have lifetime residents. We have newer residents. Everybody that works at the Strength the Love Too farm is a Baltimore City resident, mostly from Santan Winchester, because that's where it's located.
What kind of revenue stream does it look like per year for urban farms, a typical farm that's part of your organization?
So I just want to put the caveat, we're using hoop houses, which are plastic greenhouse structures. They're relatively low cost as far as greenhouse technologies go, but you're talking about for a half acre of hoop houses, probably around an $80,000 capital investment to build that. So with that level of technology, we are targeting usually in a year about $150,000 in sales, based on what's grown at that site. We'd like to push that higher and higher as we become more efficient and make some more investments in the technologies that we're using, so. But it's all sold in Baltimore City with the minor exception of a few places in Towson.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. The committee also has on file a letter from J.A. Perman, M.D., president of the University of Maryland Baltimore. Dear Chairman Stokes and members of the committee, as president of the University of Maryland Baltimore, I am writing to express my strong support for the passage of Council Bill 14-0420, the Bill to Establish Property Tax Credits for Urban Agricultural Property. UMB has a strong interest in urban agriculture and how it can help reduce health disparities and address food deserts in areas of the city like West Baltimore. Urban farms can provide locally-produced food, put vacant areas into productive use, as well as create job opportunities within distressed areas of the city. This past month, the University of Maryland Francis King Carey School of Law hosted the Urban Agricultural Conference, which brought together 200 law professors, farmers, students, and professionals in fields from city planning to public health to take a look at the wide range of issues facing urban farmers. Rather more, this bill will help provide children and their families with the nourishment they need to thrive. In Baltimore, approximately 31,000 children who live in so-called food deserts are inundated with unhealthy food choices and lack access to nutritious options. This predicament can often lead to issues such as childhood obesity. This bill can help facilitate the growth of urban farming, which can lead to an urban environment conducive to healthy living with healthier food choices for our children. I would therefore ask for a favorable report for Council Bill 14-0420. Thank you. Are there others who wish to testify here this evening? If there are none, I will ask the committee then if we should go into a discussion of some of the amendments or those that have been offered without touching sustainability, because we do not have, well, we may be able to speak to it. We don't have anything really before us. Councilman Welch, the amendments offered by the Department of Law, there's several concerns regarding the bill. First, in Section 10-18, subsection C1IB, if you can find that. Trying to find it in the bill itself. I don't know what page it's on. Mr. Petrie, you can help us?
I'd be happy to explain my suggested amendments, although they will be different in light of the proposed amendments that were passed out today. My suggested amendments would be changed to some degree in light of the amendments that have been distributed today, and I think there's some more coming. So I'd reserve, but based on the bill as introduced, I have the issue that I already spoke to about the Section 10-18, C1B and C conflicting with the definition of urban agricultural purpose that is adopted in the beginning of the bill. So that has to be reconciled somehow, and I think, as I said to Councilman Welch earlier, we will sit down with Avery Eisenstark and work out a solution to that problem.
Great. This is the bottom of Page Two, council members, qualifications for credit.
Right. The second concern I had I didn't speak to in my original testimony, but the portion of the bill that requires the owner of the property, if they cease to operate it in a way that qualifies for the credit, to be liable for all past property taxes that would have been charged had the credit not applied. I just wanted to point out an enforcement...
We're on Page Four, council members.
It's on the second page, on the second paragraph. I just wanted to point out an enforcement issue that may be able to be reconciled some way in regulations or something, but I foresee an issue with if someone qualifies for the credit, owns the property for the first three years, and then sells the property, and the new purchaser decides they don't want to operate it as an urban farm any longer. So then the property becomes no longer qualified during that five-year period, and the, so who's responsible for paying then the back property taxes? The previous owner or the current owner? So I'm just not sure how that's supposed to work. But it is in the state-enabling legislation, so, I mean, it's probably a question for the state to answer, but to interpret their law. But it, to me, it does present a problem that you would, at some point in, during the, if we were to pass this bill, that Department of Finance would be faced with determining how to handle. And then the third one is just changing one word on Page Three, line 19, it says, "The amount of the credit granted under this subsection is equal to the amount of property tax that would otherwise be imposed on the property." The law department would prefer that instead of using the word "imposed," we use "due," because there is a difference between what may be imposed on the property, and we've experienced problems in this arena with the historic tax credit, and there being problems with assessments and things like that. So we would prefer that we be able to say "due," because that would give us the ability to, what's the right word, to just account for any, fixing any problems that might have been, happened with the assessment. And so the property tax "due" would give us more flexibility.
I understand that.
You okay, Mr. Spencer? Okay. We got it. I think we are in agreement to make that change. Mr. Welch, Councilman Welch?
Let me make sure I understand. "Imposed" is the, just the original tax before any other tax credits are considered.
They're not changing the nature of what the calculation is on that first part. It's still going to be whatever the property tax is initially on the property. So that's really not changing. We just want to make sure we have some flexibility if there's a mistake at the state level in the assessment or something like that. So we want to go with what's actually, you know, determined to be due on the property.
Yeah. Let me make sure I understand. "Imposed" looks like we're looking at the original tax liability before any other credits.
Right. And "due" would be the same thing.
The amount "due" looks like... Go ahead.
"Due," I don't think would change that analysis. It would be the same value.
But we would also be looking at any other tax credits before the 90% real estate tax credit would be imposed. Is that correct?
That's a good question. No, I don't think so, because we account for that in Number Two. So that brings, you know, Number Two says less the amount of any other property tax, any other credit applicable to the property in that tax year. So that's where that comes into the calculation. So the first number does not include other credits yet. Those are subtracted in the next step.
Yeah. That's what I'm, yeah. That's why I'm looking at "imposed" versus "due." "Due" is a much, much larger calculation as opposed to what's imposed. "Imposed," to me...
Which is why we think "due" is the proper word in that initial...
Yeah. And I agree with that. I think that's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Let me go back. I want to be sure about this for-profit activities, et cetera. So a for-profit entity that uses this as for farming still gets the property tax credit?
Yeah.
Potentially, because because I'm... Potentially, 'cause because I'm, my concern about that language was under the definition in the state law, excuse me again, the, under urban architectural purposes, they refer to activities such as direct sales to restaurants and institutions and temporary produce stands. I don't know whether that, those types of activities would affect the for-profit or not-for-profit status of, of the group, or, so. I, I was concerned about that.
Yeah, let me, let me.
And because that's, that is allowed under the state law.
Okay. I'll ask Councilman Welch, and then we'll go to Councilman Henry, please.
Yeah, well, I, I think the intent of that statement is to make sure that the individual who has the property is engaged strictly in the urban farming activity, that you don't have a car wash on the property and an urban farm, and you're getting credit for the entire parcel.
Well, it still would have to comply with the definition in the state law, which a car wash would not be in urban architectural purposes under, under the definition in the state law, so I don't think you have to worry about that.
You do understand what I'm saying, is that we wanna limit it to just strictly urban farming.
But there may be things that are covered under that definition that are, would be considered for-profit. So you don't have to worry about some unrelated activity being included just because that's removed, because you are still limited by the state law and the type of activities that would qualify, that, that would, you know, that would have to be conducted on the, on the premises to qualify for the tax credit.
Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I took a moment, and I'm attempting to, to translate your advice into amendment language. And I wanted to run something by you. So on Page Two, Line 29, we would strike "other", and then on Line 30, after liability, insert the following language, so that the whole passage would read, "may not be used for any for-profit purpose that would subject the parcel to property tax liability other than for direct sales to restaurants and institutions and sales of temporary produce stands."
You could, you could be specific like that, or you could just refer to the definition, like "other than purposes expressly allowed under tax property articles".
I wasn't sure if, if, I wasn't sure if there were other things besides these two.
I'm not sure either.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, I, you know.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you. Councilman, I wanna bring back Finance. They gave us, gave the bill an unfavorable report. I just wanted to see if you're okay with what their suggested amendments are. Are you good, or you, you good? Okay, as far as I prefer, please, if you do come back to the podium because of the TV, sorry. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I, I think we were looking at striking the "for-profit" piece from that sentence on Line 29 on Page Two, so that would preclude residences from obtaining the tax credit. Property, you know, property residences. Other than that, I don't think we have any other. We, obviously, we have a question about on Page Three, and whether it's, whether it's in conflict with the urban agricultural bill. I think that's still to be resolved. We have no problems with the, the tax "due".
Okay, all right, thank you. We good?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Don Three. This is Don One, Don Two, Don Three.
Thank you, Don One. The, so, if, just to make sure I'm following, are you, are you suggesting that Finance wants to strike specifically the "for-profit" words in that phrase, or that entire "B"?
Uh, well, Councilman, our concern is that "may not be used for any other purpose" that would subject the parcel to property tax liability. So we would take out "for-profit".
Oh, well.
Any other purpose that is subject to tax liability, that's not acceptable under the urban agricultural law.
Oh, let's see what, let's, let's see what Elena says.
Will use, perhaps.
Okay, 'cause I'm looking, looking at this and looking at the definition in state law for urban agricultural purposes, that sounds like that would solve the issue, because then, ah, but Elena's shaking her head, so no, maybe it's not that easy. It, it's the, 'cause if.
Bit of a tag team, huh?
My concern with that language is that it's still potentially eliminate, tries to eliminate purposes that would be allowed under the definition in the state law.
Ah, but this is, if I'm, if, if, if I'm reading it right, if instead of striking "other", we struck "for-profit", and it just read "may not be used for any other purpose that would subject the parcel to property tax liability", then it automatically is referring back to urban agricultural purposes.
That's right.
I, I don't think so, I don't think it's clear enough.
Oh, really?
Doesn't do it for me, let's just say. I, I just, I would prefer language that specifically.
You want suspenders also.
I'm sorry?
You want suspenders on top of the belt.
I, I think we need to refer to the law, to the state law definition in that section.
Oh, oh.
And say, at least say, "may not be used for any other purpose that would subject the parcel to property tax liability other than purposes expressly allowed under the definition of urban architectural purposes in State Tax Property Article Nine, Two, Five, Three."
But up in Lines 10 through 12, it explicitly says, "urban agricultural purposes".
We're not using that same terminology in B.
No, 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 but, but we're using that same terminology in A, right? So must be an urban agricultural property that's being used for urban agricultural purposes, which has the meaning stated in State Tax Property Article.
Right, but that B tries to qualify A by saying "may not be used for", in one breath, you're saying, okay, it, it must be used for urban architectural purposes. And then in B, you're saying, "accept an urban architectural, potential urban architectural purpose that it would subject the parcel to property tax liability."
Not if you leave "other" in there.
I'm sorry?
But not if you leave "other" in there. "May not be used for any other purpose."
No, I don't think so, no. No, it doesn't work that way. It doesn't work just by taking "other", leaving "other" in there.
Okay, all right. This is, this is, this is, this is one of those times where I'm gonna say, all right, I'm gonna admit there must be a subtlety here that, that the staying at a Holiday Inn Express wasn't sufficient to cure. So, all right, then, Mr. Mr. Chair?
I think we need to see these amendments together in one place to adequately evaluate, you know, them as a whole, as opposed to, you know, some verbally expressed amendments, other amendments we haven't seen yet. So I, I'm reserving my, my comment to say that I'm commenting on just what I have in paper in front of me. And I have not had a chance to really look at the one set of amendments that I guess are, I don't know who submitted them. And now Finance has a bunch scribbled on a piece of paper that I haven't really had a chance to read. And I don't know if there's any other amendments opposed by other agencies, but like I said, I'm reserving judgment until I see them all written in a form that I can actually read them.
Okay, Mr. Councilman?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would like to take this opportunity to withdraw my earlier advice that perhaps we can get by with just having the discussion now and proceeding expeditiously to a voting session. Maybe if, if.
Councilman, you know, being respectful of you, I'd already decided that, but.
I, I, I can, I can, I can, I'm completely unsurprised if, if Don One had already come to that conclusion. And it, it occurs to me that we, we will have a council meeting this coming Monday night that will give you opportunity to announce a reconvened hearing date. So, okay, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you all, and Sustainability would ask that you get your amendments into us as quickly as possible so that the council members and the committee members will have an opportunity to look at all of this prior to our coming back together. We will come back together soon. I will announce the reconvening of the committee on Monday night. So at this time, the Taxation, Finance, Economic Development Committee is in recess on City Council Bill 14-0420. Thank you all.